Way more coming your way this, uh, this fall, including trunk or treat.
All right.
But we can see you.
Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Uh, can we get roll call, please?
Certainly. Councilmember Ferraro.
Present.
Councilmember Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember Parisam.
Here.
Mayor Protam Seo.
Here.
Mayor Bradley.
Here.
Of Quorum, our next item is the Pledge of Allegiance.
Today, Councilmember Parisam will be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, next item, please.
Our next item is the closed session report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protam, Mayor, and members of the council, and any who are joining us in person or virtually. We had one item that we covered on our closed session agenda item. It is one matter of pending litigation to which the city is a party. The title of the litigation is Miu and Mu Mo, M-O-U-V Zhang versus the City of Rancho Palos Verdes, Los Angeles County Superior Court, case number 25 TR CP 00361. The city attorney's office provided a privileged and confidential briefing on the status of this litigation and the recommended strategy for defending the city's interest in the litigation. Questions were asked and answered. No reportable action was taken. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, next item, please.
Are the mayor's announcements?
And, uh, under the mayor's announcements today, I don't know if the deputies are here or not, but we are going to be recognizing, um, our firefighters as well as our deputies today once they get in here.
Yeah, he, he's here.
One moment.
They're here.
One moment.
Yay!
All right.
Hello. Hi.
That's exactly what I was thinking.
You brought the whole gang.
Yeah, like our city attorney says, if you guys are all here, then... Yeah, who's running the station?
I gave him another arm.
Oh, got it. Okay. All right, good evening, guys. Thanks for being here. Okay, so, uh, I'm gonna move on real quick. And tonight, uh, we invited LA County Fire and Sheriff's Department to recognize them for their courageous response to a large apartment fire on August 25th. Um, a kitchen... So for all those in the public that don't know, we had a huge fire at 1833 Cattington and in our city, and our firefighter and sheriff's department did a phenomenal job. It was a kitchen grease fire that broke out in one apartment, and it kind of spread, but it was contained to one unit. Thankfully, both departments responded swiftly and contained the fire to one unit. Our deputies and firefighters successfully evacuated all residents, and there were no injuries. So we're so thankful for the heroes and dedication to our residents' safety. And, uh, to kick things off, we invited the sheriff's department, along with battalion chief Kelsey, to speak with us about the fire and ways to handle various types of home fires. So, Chief, you want to come up real quick and just, uh, do your presentation? That'd be phenomenal. Hold on, give me one second. I think you gotta turn that mic on real quick on the bottom there. Uh, bottom of the mic. Right behind it? Yeah. There we go.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you for having me tonight. Uh, my name is Wade Kelsey. I'm one of the three battalion chiefs here in Battalion 14, which covers the Peninsula and Lomita. Uh, I wanted to give you a quick update on what happened at the fire on Cattington. Uh, at 8:45 PM on August 25th, 2025, units from the Los Angeles County Fire Department were dispatched to a reported structure fire at 1833 Cattington Drive, number 53. First arriving units found heavy fire from a three-story apartment house. Fire companies initiated an aggressive, offensive interior attack and declared lockdown shortly after arrival. Crews performed a rapid search of the structure and have found no victims inside. Fire damage was held to the unit of origin, however, there was several other units that were affected, which caused displacement of approximately 14 residents. Um, I believe there was four other units that sustained smoke and, uh, water damage. There was four injuries to, uh, there was four deputy sheriffs that were injured and were treated at the scene, one being transferred to Harvard General Smoke Inhalation. I want to commend the deputies that put themselves in harm's way. They're able to, by and large, get to the location quicker than we are, but they definitely put themselves in harm's way, attempted to extinguish the fire with the house signs on scene there, and were prepared to make any, uh, immediate, uh, rescues of any personnel that were inside, if there were any. Uh, we did a interior search, found nobody inside. I think that this incident illustrates the importance of having, uh, some good knowledge of basic kitchen fire safety skills and making sure that we have smoke detectors in place. And that's my, uh, report on the fire. So I'll go over a few, uh, kitchen safety, uh, tips. Uh, one is, uh, grease fires are one of the, the major causes of, uh, fires in kitchens, and kitchen fires in general are one of the major causes of fire in, uh, structured fires across the country. Uh, one way that we can reduce kitchen fires is by making sure that our stoves, toasters, ovens are clean of any debris, um, old, uh, old food items such as crumbs and such. We want to make sure those are clean. Uh, if we have a grease fire, we want to make sure that everybody understands that water is not the answer. Water is gonna spread the fire, so we want to make sure to smother it. And that could be done in a couple different ways. It can be covered with a lid. Uh, they make fire blankets that you can buy at retail stores that you can cover the fire with, uh, if it's on the stove. And I would say the last resort would be a dry chemical B.C. extinguisher that you could extinguish the fire, what's gonna smother it as well. If you have a fire in your oven, another good way to, uh, to, uh, extinguish that fire is to make sure the door is shut and the oven is turned off. If anything ever, at any point, gets out of hand, we want to make sure that after all these things are done, if possible, exit the building, call 911, and make sure everybody in the immediate vicinity is alerted. More importantly, we want to close the door when you leave. Uh, if we leave doors open, that causes extension to other areas of the building. So if we can make sure that you close the door when you leave, that really helps that to contain the fire to the room of origin. I think that about covers as far as kitchen fire safety.
Okay. Thank you very much, Chief. I really appreciate that.
Okay.
And just on behalf of the city and, uh, the people and, and in our public, I just want to say thank you very much to you and your team, as well as the deputies that are here. I know you guys have a lot of work to do, and, um, your timely response and your care for our residents really made a difference. And having no injuries and no lives lost in a situation like this is phenomenal. So I just want to say thank you very much, and I appreciate you guys very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, do you want to say a couple words?
Yeah, uh, just a couple things. Uh, the fact that, uh, we didn't have any major injuries, any loss of life, and minimized the property damage, I mean, is a true testament to our deputies that were there on site immediately, and then LA County Fire that came in and really, uh, took care of the situation. So thank you to both of those departments for a tremendous job well done. Once again, uh, thank you guys for being there and having our backs.
Captain Guerrero, you want to say a couple words?
I do, actually. Um, these deputies, you know, they, they go out there, and we, we are, I always tell you, um, that we are short staff, so for them to actually go out there and the efforts that they, that, that night was just... It was amazing, and I, I truly thank you guys for the work that you do on a daily basis. And I, I know you don't get that a lot, but really, y- you guys are, are the heroes. You and fire, thank you so much for all that you do every day in, in and out. And having that unified command was huge, uh, in the safety of lives and property. So I appreciate you.
All right. Uh, we're not done yet. You gotta take the picture.
Mayor Protam?
Yeah.
Can I add, can I add something?
Yeah, Councilmember Parisam, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I, I had the opportunity to, uh, go out during the fire, and I spent a lot of time on the curb with the, uh, with the residents that were removed from their properties, asked to, uh, gather properties for their safety. And I know this isn't statistical, but the feedback was outstanding in complimenting both Fire Department and the Police Department for how well they handled the situation. They were calm, they were supportive, they were patient, and the feedback was, yeah, not statistical, but the people I had the opportunity to talk to were very supportive and very happy. So if that's, I don't think you can get any better feedback, uh, than directly from the people that you serve. So thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor Protam.
Awesome. Thank you. Councilmember Ferraro.
I just want to say thank you. I mean, we don't get a chance to say that often enough, I think. And we really appreciate what you all do and how you keep us safe in all manner of ways. So thank you very much.
All right, picture time.
Mayor, Mayor Protam, if I can just say one thing, um, one last thing, just, uh, it, it's about a year and a half ago, we had the Vista Verde condominium fire over in Lomita, and that was right on the border of Rancho Palos Verdes and Lomita, and that entire building was, um, was destroyed by, by this fire. And this could have easily been, um, a similar situation. And I just want to commend all the firefighters, the, the sheriff deputies from the Lomita station that responded, um, to the scene so quickly and got, made sure all the residents came out. I also want to recognize, uh, Chief Kane and Captain Guerrero, because the communication, we, we have a communication tree, and, um, I was immediately contacted. Uh, we, we have a, a way to communicate with one another. I'm able to contact the council immediately, so you're aware of what's going on, and we could be in constant contact as this fire was being battled by the firefighters. And so I think it was a perfect, in, in a very, um, challenge, difficult situation, what the outcome was, was an ideal situation in, in, with all things considered. It could have been much worse. And so thank you, thank you for the communication. Thank you for being there and, and serving our community on the Peninsula here.
Unless you guys want to, you guys want to say anything?
Um, I'll say something really quick. Uh, Deputy Anthony Gamboa, um, I was one of the first ones that got there, um, and part of this crew, people and deputies that were there. Um, I think for us, we got there and we just saw that that fire was getting pretty out of hand. Uh, we didn't know if anybody was inside, so we wanted to work quickly. We've seen recently how quickly fire spreads, especially with that fire you were talking about on Palos Verdes Drive North. Um, that entire complex went up, um, and a lot of people were displaced. So when we got there, uh, we tried to do what we could. We worked as a team, um, tried to get everybody out, forced entry into several units, uh, just to make sure that, uh, everyone was safe, and looks like it had a good outcome. So, um, went well, and then the fire department showed up with full force, and they were able to take over, and thank God for them, because, uh, just big team effort all around. Thank you very much.
Don't be shy, guys.
We're gonna take a picture with everybody.
We'll, we'll put it in our weekly administrative report.
Okay.
You can take the photo, and then you're good to go.
All right.
Okay, everybody look up there.
All right, ready? One.
Are you in the picture?
One, two. All right, there's one. Okay. Here we go. Ready, one, two.
This is the captain, so it's gotta be good.
Thank you for everything.
Thank you. Thanks, guys.
Thank you all.
That's a sound we could hear more often. A laughter of joy.
Mayor Protam, it's no fair. You get to do all the cool stuff.
Go for work. I'm just, I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding.
No, he's not.
No, he, the mayor is doing important work in DC. He's, he's advocating for funds for us. Yes, he's doing a heavy lifting right now. It is, very much so. All right, let's, uh, move to next item, please.
And he's a radio personality.
He's a radio personality.
Or just a personality.
All right, let's move to the next item.
For our next item, um, I will need a motion to move approval of the recycle and emergency personal preparedness kit drawing winners, Judy Jobs and Irma Rivera.
So moved.
Can I get a second, please?
Sure, second.
Thank you.
Councilmember Parisam?
Yes.
Or Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferraro?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Seo?
Yes.
Mayor Bradley?
Yes.
Motion passes. With that, we can move to our approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Councilmember Ferraro?
Yes.
Councilmember Parisam?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Seo?
Yes.
Mayor Bradley?
Yes.
Motion passes. With that, we can move to our public comments for non-agenda items, and I do have one request to speak via Zoom, Eva Alblutia.
All right. Eva, are you there?
Hey, Eva.
Sure.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we got you. Good evening.
Thank you. Let's see. Let me get my video. All right, perfect. Good evening, uh, Mayor Bradley, Per, Per Mayor, um, Seo, and City Council, and City Staff. Um, I wanted to go back to the comment that George said on the last meeting, which was that he feels it's necessary to slash the budget of the landslide, um, in this current year, and that was a big discussion in the last meeting. Um, one, one thing that has never been discussed is how much you have in reserves. Just going back on May, um, in your monthly treasury reports, balance, the cash reserve there is at currently $81 million. Um, that's in investments. That is a great fund that you have that does accumulate cash without having to do anything but have the money in reserves and investments. If I were to take that at a 5% um, growth rate per year, you're looking at about $4 million annually that that would come in. On top of that, you have your CIP and other growth revenues of the city, and that's never discussed. Um, it's always coming from a corner of our city's suffering, and the landslide is taking a lot of money away from the city, which I understand, it is a big budget. But your investment right now that you have made so far has reduced the GPS movement of the landslide by over 50%. In some areas, it has reduced to zero movement. That means what you have invested has worked. You're almost through the threshold of great progress, and to go backwards and slash funds at this moment, we cannot do, because you will go backwards and lose the money you have invested in the landslide. We lost 20 red-tag homes. We lost 38 yellow-tag homes. We can't lose more homes. These are retirees that are forced out of their homes. So please take into account you do have money coming in. There are other revenues, and the AB 986 did a great job, and it's almost to the final finish line. Money is coming, and I understand you want to cut corners, but right now is not the time to cut corners. So I beg all of you guys to reconsider, to go for force what you have, because next year, yes, you will be able to save money on this project, and next year, I see money coming from the state also. So please take that into consideration and do not slash the buzz, budget this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Eva. Um, just really quick, I think we need to clarify that point, because I think it's a very important point. Usually, we don't usually respond to public comment, but I think Ara, if you could say a few words about clarification about the numbers that she mentioned.
Yeah, abs, absolutely. And for the public's benefit, especially the speaker, every month you receive a treasurer's report, and in fact, on your consent calendar is the treasurer's report this, for, um, for the month of August. And our funds are, continue to decline. What she reported on as being 80 million or 80-plus million in, in May is now down to 76 million. And all those funds that, um, that are being invested are actually encumbered in certain restricted funds, whether it's the general fund, whether it's the CIP, or other restricted funds. In fact, um, just reading off of our cash balance for the, on the agenda this evening, you have 30 million of, of that 76 is in restricted funds, 29.5 million is in the, uh, general fund, and 16 million is in the CIP fund. All that money is already allocated and spoken for. Your general fund, how you operate the city, is that money that's being invested. We're earning interest, but every, we have to withdraw out of that to pay for all of our expenses as, as we, sometimes our revenues don't, uh, meet up with our expend, expenditures. That money is all encumbered for, so it's very important to know. And Assembly Bill 986, which I'll speak on during my ma, uh, my city manager's report, is not a guarantee of any money. It's disaster aid when there's a local disaster declared.
Question for you, Ara, just to be, uh, clear for all the audience, that, um, a restricted fund means, if I understand it right, that that money is only allowable to be spent on certain purposes. So for example, we might get a grant from the state for, for traffic safety. And even within the state's grant of that money, what is defined by the state as traffic safety can be even restricted from there. Wouldn't be things, we might think paving the roads, traffic safety, but they might say no, for example. So when you're saying a lot of this money is already restricted, I know that to be true. It means we can't just say, "Oh, heck, we're just gonna spend it on something else." That would be illegal. So, um, I just wanted to see if I understood that right and make sure everybody in the audience understands that.
You are absolutely correct. Um, that was a very good example. We, also, if we get grant money for open space purposes or habitat, that money can only be spent for that. And so that money gets put into a special fund, and it's, we call it a restricted fund. So, um, it, like I said, this report is brought to the council monthly. It's a treasurer's report. It's always at the beginning of the month, and I think it's very important to follow. I've been following it, and two years ago, we were 100 million plus. We are now at $76 million. And it's just a real situation that we're facing right now.
Thank you, Ara. With that being said, I think next item is city manager report.
Yes, so I'll continue with my report, and I know we lost our audience with, with our public safety officers, but I appreciate the council recognizing our, um, first responders, like I said, and that, I, I, we know firsthand how fast fires, uh, can spread, especially when there's shared walls and so forth. And, and even the Vista Verde fire, that was caused by a microwave popping, um, using the microwave for popcorn, and something so benign and simple caused 17 units to be destroyed by a fire, and this was a grease fire. So that's why I really wanted to showcase, um, kitchen fire safety. So with that said, I know we were talking about the landslide. If Terry, if you can go to the next slide, so I think Terry's gonna be navigating my, my presentation this evening. It's, um, I'd like to start with reflecting on where we were a year ago. It was a year ago, a Labor Day weekend, that, um, we experienced the utility shut offs, uh, primarily Southern California Edison going in and shutting off the power to the Portuguese Bend Community Association, and literally two days later, shutting off the power in a certain portion of Seaview and, and, uh, Portuguese Bend Beach Club. But as you re, as you may recall, a year ago at this time, we were averaging, uh, land movement upwards of a foot a week. And so the situation was quite dire there. And so the situation was quite dire there. And so not only did SCE turn off power to these properties for safety reasons, but a few weeks earlier, the gas company also shut off gas to the Portuguese Bend Community Association. And of course, communications lines, Cox Communication pulled out as well. It was a very difficult time. I think all of us remember Labor Day weekend very differently last year than we experienced this past weekend. But the residents haven't forgotten. And in fact, last night, there was, the residents in the Portuguese Bend Community Association got together, and they said, you know, they were using the slogan as benders can't break or don't break. And that's a testament of how resilient the community is and how we stick together. It's that whole slogan of RPV together. But since a year ago, the city, as the speaker on non-agenda items mentioned, is we've invested upwards of forty-eight million dollars responding to this landslide on our own. And in September, we started operating the deep dewatering wells. We started our winterization in October to help put some temporary liners in the canyons. We were doing fissure filling. We were out there in full force, and we saw the benefits of that because land movement, as you know from the last report you received on the landslide, were down to no movement on the eastern portion of the landslide, which is the Sea View neighborhood, as well as the Portuguese Bend Beach Club. And then we're seeing a rate of movement of approximately one to two inches per week in the Portuguese Bend Community Association, and that area is shrinking. We had a conversation recently with Southern California Edison. We're encouraging them to start planning to restore power because we believe we'll be at the one-inch-per-week threshold that is required by SCE in a few weeks here, as long as we continue to do our dewatering efforts. So I just wanted to take a moment to recognize this one-year period that we've gone through and everything that we've experienced. If we go to the next slide, I know I touched upon Assembly Bill 986, and you know, the city has been tracking this bill. We are sponsors of this bill. And we're very excited that it's at the point that it's at because last year, it died at the Senate. It went from Assembly, I announced this at the last meeting, it went from Assembly, and then it went into the suspense file. And we received word on Friday that it moved from the suspense file to actually the Senate floor. So the Senate has until September 12th to review this bill. As a reminder, this bill is authored by Assembly Member Mirsuji and co-authored by Senator Allen, Ben Allen. And the purpose of this bill is to actually add the term landslide to the State's Emergency Services Act. If it passes, and that means the Senate would have to pass, and then the bill goes in front of the governor, and the governor has until mid-October to sign the bill into law. If that all happens, which we don't know if that's actually going to, if the governor is actually going to sign this bill. So we can't really hang our hats on any guarantees. But even if the bill passes, that doesn't open up money to the city. There has to be an emergency, a declared emergency, state of emergency, related to a landslide in order for funding to come our way. And so as a reminder, the governor did declare a state of emergency. The former president, Biden, did declare a federal disaster as a result of the winter storms. We submitted our disaster recovery for those winter storms. We were denied, and we're still going through the appeal process. I just want the public to understand, if Assembly Bill 986 passes, it doesn't open up funding. It has to be related to a disaster, and the governor has to declare a disaster.
Yes, so just to clarify, it's not retrospective.
Correct. It is not retroactive. Okay, moving on to the next slide. Another very, what I think is a very important and significant matter is September is Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, and the city stands in raising awareness and erasing the stigma associated with suicide. I think it's a very important topic that we need to be open and encourage discussions. I think people are all going through very difficult times. And it's important that we are united and we recognize those signs and let people know that they're not alone, that they can talk about it. And I want to remind the public that there is the nationwide hotline, the 988 number, that you can use if you need someone to speak to. So if you ever need someone to talk to, just reach out to that 988 number. And we will continue to promote and join in the efforts of raising awareness on suicide prevention. Next slide. So September also happens to be National Preparedness Awareness Month. And this is also a very serious subject, but from our perspective, we also want to add a little lightness to this topic to help raise awareness and let people know how important it is to be prepared for any type of disaster. And it could be a structure fire, it could be a wildfire, it could be an earthquake, it could be a flood. And so our team at City Hall are producing these reels, these social media reels that we're going to be airing. And I've got two of them that I'd like to take a minute or two to show. They're really good examples of how we can raise awareness and using some lightness, and especially in regards to the earthquake that happened in Afghanistan with almost fourteen-hundred people perished. So with the earthquake, right, I'm sorry. And we're going to show the reels. One's on earthquake preparedness and one's on wildfire. We're having technical difficulties. We got to have sound.
Mr. City Manager, that looks like you during a city council meeting.
Someone had to bring that up. I practice what I preach.
I know you do.
You're probably the first one under the table.
We'll always remember how quickly you did that.
Is that an earthquake? Seriously, don't be that guy. When an earthquake strikes, drop cover and hold on wherever you are until the shaking stops. If you need to evacuate, take the stairs. Don't take the elevator. Were you really about to get in the elevator right now?
What did that last one say?
Were you really going to get into that elevator? Of course, Jen helped narrate that. And we've got one more video on wildfire.
How's it going today? RPV is a high-fire-risk zone. There's no smoking in any of the parks or preserves in the city. Not bad. Don't be that guy. One spark can start a wildfire. Don't smoke in the parks or preserves, and red flag days, avoid anything that can create a spark. Really sorry, man.
What is he saying?
I just want to give a big shout out to our team who are producing these reels. I mean, we're all, you know, you have to stay on top of things on how to communicate to your audience out there. And you know, people have very short attention spans. They want quick videos. And so the fact that we've adapted and we're now producing these videos using in-house services, I want to just commend the crew that does. These videos will air on our social media platforms. Sorry about that. All right, we'll continue on to the next slide.
Those of us that were live when Beretta was on TV will recall the soundtrack.
Way before my time, Councilman Lewis.
Same here.
Must be before mine, too.
So speaking of being preparedness, I just want to announce that the Council of Homeowners Association, in partnership with the city, will be hosting a wildfire home hardening expo here at Hess Park on Saturday, September 27th, at 10:00 a.m. to noon. And this is a great opportunity to speak to different tradesmen and vendors who will be set up in this room with kiosks, with products that they sell that you can use for hardening your home, whether it comes to vents, screens, landscape, or brush clearance services, the types of windows, building materials you could be purchasing. So this expo is going to happen here. We're also going to be giving away the pool signs. This is something that we're borrowing from our sister city in Malibu, where they have homes that have pools, have signs in the front yards so the firefighters can know if there's a home with a pool that they can use. So we'll be giving out those signs to residents if they have a swimming pool. So mark your calendars. This is a very important and great opportunity for our residents. Don't miss for RPV. Next slide. So September 20th at 9:00 a.m. is going to be our 2025 Annual Coastal Cleanup Day. If you're interested in volunteering and working with the Los Arenas docents, please go to Founder's Park, and we will provide you with all the necessary equipment to help clean up our beaches. Next slide. And the berm months are upon us, and you know what that means. It means Halloween is right around the corner. It'll be here before you know it. And we do our annual trunk-or-treat event. This year is going to be Saturday, October 11th. It will be from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Kendita Civic Center. We need volunteers to bring their cars and open up their trunks and decorate their trunks, and for all the trick-or-treaters. So if you have never been to one of our trunk-or-treat event, it's a huge, we have hundreds and hundreds of kids that come out, and it's a huge, huge event, and it's quite successful. So we're looking for volunteers. If you're interested in volunteering your trunk, your trunk, go to events@rpvca.gov. Next slide. And round three is upon us. We've got our Western Avenue storefront improvement program, as the council approved in this year's budget. We have grants available to merchants along Western Avenue that want to update their storefronts. We have grants ranging from $5,000 to $20,000. The applications are now being accepted, and we're accepting the applications through October 31st, which happens to be Halloween. Next slide. And did you know that the first broadcast of RPV-TV was on August 27th, 2005? That was twenty years ago. We're celebrating RPV-TV's 20th anniversary, and I know our crews out there, and they do an amazing job. They're a reward-winning crew that covers all city-related matters. Anytime there's a city event or function, whether it's the state of the city, whether it's the mayor's announcements, they're always there recording and providing a conduit between the city and our community. I just want to give a big shout out to Liz, Maria, Jeff, Carlos, and as well as Sean back there, who they help run our council meetings and produce those and ARAM, as well as my City Manager's Report of the summary of the council meetings. So thank you to RPV-TV, and happy 20th anniversary to them. And speaking of anniversaries, if we go to the next slide, the city's got a special anniversary right around the corner. Sunday, September 7th, is going to be our 52nd anniversary. And in tradition, since we started our 50th anniversary, we have an open house where we open City Hall, and the public's welcome to come between 4:00 and 6:00 p.m. this Thursday, September 4th. Come to City Hall. The back of offices will be open. You can walk around, talk to staff, meet staff, understand what each department does. And we'll have some refreshments in the community room, and then some speaking opportunities around 5:15 that evening. So if you're interested and want to come by City Hall, we welcome you. It's Thursday, September 4th, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. And if we go to the last slide, I just want to wish Renta Palace Verdes a happy 52nd anniversary. And in commemoration of our anniversary, we've got, you can't have an anniversary without a cake, so we've got a cake. Unfortunately, we lost our audience, but we've got a pretty big cake here that Emily's bringing out. And I thought it'd be, I thought it'd be really great if the council could blow out the candle, and then we'll have cake slices for anybody who wants any. The candles, yes, the five-two.
We'll save you a slice, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I thought it was just, you know, Ara trying to make sure that he brought cake when I wasn't there.
Nope, I did not bake this cake. It's a store-bought cake. So I don't know, maybe we'll bring it up.
Let's go up and cut the cake real quick.
Okay. Maybe we could take a photo of the council? No cake-eating contest.
You know, if we turned around one of our screens, we could get the mayor in the picture, too.
You can't see it, but that's a really nice city logo on top of the case.
Can you take a photo of that? It will push the weekly report.
Happy anniversary, RPV. All of you.
Maybe we can win the lottery as a city. We could use a billion dollars.
A billion dollars could help us defray some things.
Yeah, that'll help our treasurer report.
I'm sure Vina could come up with ways to take care of that for us.
And Mayor Protem, that concludes my City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Ara. All right, let's move on to the next item, please.
Our next item is the consent calendar. I do have one request to speak on item letter F, as in Frank.
Can we hear the speaker first and then do the whole consent calendar?
Okay. Our speaker then is Eva Albucha on item letter F.
Eva, are you there? Eva?
Hey, Eva. Hi, everyone. Hi, City Council, Mayor. You can hear me okay?
Yeah, we got you.
All right. Let's see. All right. Well, I was hoping to hear the report prior to talking because I wanted to make a comment on the report. But going back to the landslide again, again, I cannot, you know, express how much we have moved in progress and the work that's been done in the wells have done miracles to our area. And it's progressing in such a positive manner. But again, you know, the Graven that isn't exultant and dauntless, it's something that is very mentally hurtful. It's something that it would be nice to have it not completely filled in, but enough to have water moving in a proper manner. Our area in Sea View has water just being dumped in different areas. We have equipment dumped in that area. It's a constant, hurtful presentation for all of us, especially when we have all these red-tagged homes around us. And we will see those red-tagged homes continuously because there is no FEMA yet, and that's going to be a long-term solution. So to at least do something of water management with the Graven that doesn't communicate water sink in that one area would be amazing. And also, please get Cow Water to start working with new piping in the other side, the eastern side of Sea View. You do see numbers of movement on the east side. You do see cracks all up and down, exultant curbsides. There is stress on the other side, and it would be amazing if you can get Cow Water to fix those pipes. They did say they would do it at the very beginning, and now they backed out. Water rates went high, were paying for damages that were done to our house, but yet they don't fix their infrastructure. So whatever help you can do in that aspect would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Ava. Considering F was spoken on, I think we can move to wave staff report and take the consent calendar as a whole. So can I get a motion, please, to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Ferraro?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Peristam?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Seo?
Yes.
Mayor Bradley?
Yes.
Motion passes. With that, we can move to our first regular business. Item number one, consideration to initiate code amendment proceedings to exempt the Equestrian Overlay District from Senate Bill 9, Regulations in the Rancho Palos Verdes Municipal Code. Late Correspondence was distributed earlier and is at the dais for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we get the staff report, please?
Hi, good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem and council members. The report will be provided by Senior Planner Jessica Bobbin.
Good evening, guys.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. The item before you this evening is for the consideration to initiate code amendment proceedings to exempt the Equestrian Overlay District from Senate Bill 9 Regulations in the Rancho Palos Verdes Municipal Code. Next slide. To provide some background, on September 16th of 2021, Governor Newsom signed Senate Bill 9, known as SB 9, into law. Following on January 1st of 2022, SB 9 Regulations went into effect. On December 21st, 2021, in preparation for the enactment of the state's SB 9 Regulations, the City Council adopted Ordinance Number 656U, thereby enacting SB 9-related regulations to include the allowed local standards of Chapter 16.40 and Chapter 17.09 in the city's municipal code. On October 11th, 2023, SB 684 was signed into law, which amended the provisions related to SB 9 Regulations. Next slide, please. As previously mentioned, SB 9 went into effect in January of 2022. SB 9 allows for a proposed two-unit housing development within single-family residential zones to be considered ministerially without discretionary review or public hearing if the proposed housing meets certain basic requirements established by the state. This limits the requirements a local agency could impose in improving such development if the municipality has adopted local regulations pertaining to SB 9. Subsequently, on October of 2023, SB 684 was signed into law. SB 684 amended the provisions related to SB 9 Regulations and created an exemption to eliminate the urban dwelling unit development standard for single-family residential sites located within a horsekeeping zone. SB 684 specifies that in order to qualify for this exemption for the horsekeeping zone, they must have been adopted prior to January 1st, 1994. The city established an Equestrian Overlay District to permit horsekeeping on December 9th, 1975, with the adoption of Ordinance Number 78. The overlay zone is located in certain single-family residential zones as seen on the City Council adopted zoning map for the city. As such, SB 684 would pertain to the city's Equestrian Overlay District. Pictured here is a map of the city, which includes the Equestrian Overlay District outlined in the black dashed lines. Specifically, this includes four areas in the city that are within the Equestrian Overlay District, including areas off of Rolling Ridge Road and Via Campesina, a portion of Crest Ridge Road, Portuguese Bend Community Association, and the northern portion of Palos Verdes Drive East between approximately Miralast Intermediate School and the boundary with the city of Rolling Hills Estates. It should be noted that on August 19th, 2025, the City Council adopted Ordinance Number 692, which, among other things, prohibits the construction of new residences within the Greater Portuguese Bend Landslide Complex, including the Portuguese Bend Community Association. Ordinance Number 692 goes into effect on September 18th, 2025, 30 days after the second reading. Staff recommends the council initiate code amendment proceedings to amend Rancho Palos Verdes Municipal Code as outlined in tonight's staff report. This concludes my presentation, and staff is available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any, are there any questions from City Council members? No? Mr. Mayor, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Thank you. Then can I get a motion, please?
I'll move staff recommendation.
I'll second.
Councilman Peristam?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ferraro?
Yes.
Councilman Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Seo?
Yes.
Mayor Bradley?
Yes.
Motion passes. With that, we can move to item number two, consideration to receive a report on the use of technology as potential speed safety system and loud vehicle exhaust enforcement programs. Late Correspondence was also distributed earlier, and I do not have any request to speak.
Thank you. Staff report, please.
Yes, Mayor Protem, as we're transitioning staff here, I just want to give a brief background as to why this item is on the council's agenda. As you know, at the end of every meeting, we ask if there's any future agenda items you'd like us to add to the tenitives. And about a year and a half ago, former council member John Kruchenk and Eric Allegria had requested that an item, that this item be brought forward because the city had endorsed or supported certain legislation that would enact speed or using technology to deal with loud exhaust and speed. And so it's been a while since we were short on staff to have this item come forward, and so we finally got a chance with our Public Safety Division to present this report. So I'm going to hand it to our Public Safety Manager, Jen Schmidt, to give the report.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem and Honorable Council Members. Ara did already give a little background, but tonight we're providing an update on different speed programs and related enforcement tools. So on January 16th, 2024, former Mayor Kruchenk and former Mayor Protem Allegria requested that staff provide information on legislation pertaining to speed safety systems and enforcement of loud vehicle exhausts. So our recommendation is to receive and file the report on the speed safety programs and consider if the city should pursue a similar program. With that, across the country, over 316 communities use speed safety cameras. In California, AB 65 launched a pilot in six major cities, and SB 1297 later added Malibu to that bill due to dangerous speeding along Pacific Coast Highway. The cameras are focused on high-injury corridors. They trigger when a driver exceeds the speed limit of over 11 miles per hour or more. Fines are tiered, starting at $50, and they go up to $500 depending on the violate, how many times they violate that area. These are civil citations only, no DMV points, no insurance impacts. The law requires strict privacy protections and revenue neutrality, so excess revenue can only go towards traffic calming measures. San Francisco is the first city to have launched this program. They installed just over 50 cameras, and so far, their findings, they've issued over 132 warnings in the first month. Other cities are still working on their programs, and the cost does vary depending on the level of staffing and the requirements for, you know, different areas of where they would like to place the cameras. For some context, we do have 2021 to 2024 RPV-specific traffic data. In 2021, we had 65 injury traffic collisions, four traffic collisions due to DUI, and zero fatalities. In 2022, we had 61 injury traffic collisions, five DUI traffic collisions, and two fatalities. In 2023, we only had the data between May and December 2023. For that, there was 50 injury traffic collisions, one DUI traffic collision, and zero fatalities. For 2024, there was 55 injury traffic collisions, four DUI traffic collisions, and zero fatalities. To participate in the pilot program, the city must conduct detailed traffic study that identifies that high injury and/or fatality corridor and analyze about five years of speed-related collision data. We also have to secure legislative sponsorship, draft speed safety system use policy, and prepare an impact report and adjudication process and identifying funding as well. So staff seeks council affirmation to collect and manage speed data. Oh, sorry, that's the last one. Any questions about the speed cameras? We have two others in this presentation.
Any questions? No.
Awesome. Onto the next one, we have radar speed feedback signs. So we're, staff seeks council affirmation to collect and manage speed data to potentially support traffic enforcement with the Lumina Sheriff's Station. RPV already uses radar feedback signs, and there's permanent devices that are in place on Hawthorne, Edding Hill, Abbot's Wood, and Geronimo. Mobile signs are deployed on Verde Ridge and Miralast, with two more permanent signs planned for PV Drive East. These devices can also collect speed data, data that could support local law enforcement. When we collect this data, we can, you know, try and target the specific timeframes that we're seeing any specific violations. We also have mobile speed feedback signs that have been placed along, on Verde Ridge Road and, oops, sorry about that. On Verde Ridge Road near La Clenna Lane and along Miralast Drive. Staff is asking council to affirm collecting and managing this data. Onto our next area, we have loud vehicle exhausts. Staff recommends receiving and filing this report on loud vehicle exhaust detection tools. Loud exhaust is enforced under California Vehicle Code, which sets the limit at 95 disciples. Enforcement is difficult because deputies do have to hear the violation in real time. SB 1079 authorized sound-activated enforcement cameras, but the pilot is on hold while CHP evaluates devices. RPV supported the bill in 2022 but did not join the pilot due to costs and staff monitoring, but the data collected through other pilot cities can be evaluated to potentially implement an RPV with potential future grant funding. For now, we rely on sheriff patrols, resident reporting, and message board warnings of zero tolerance. Staff is recommending to receive and file the speed safety camera report. Consider pursuing legislative authorization of RPV's inclusion in California's Speed Safety Pilot Program. Affirm staff collection of speed feedback sign data and receive and file the update on loud exhaust systems. And that concludes my report. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from City Council members? Councilmember Lewis?
So I think I understand you right, that we're not committing to these programs any capital outlay. What we're asking to do is to evaluate them further. And so when we talk about this evaluation, is there a hard cost? Is there a consultant cost, or is this administrative cost where we're allocating staff time to do it?
So the program in its entirety, we would have to look at the cost for the cameras itself. Just to give background, Malibu is spending about $2 million for five cameras, and that's not including the staff to evaluate the program issue and mitigate the citations and then get the consultants on board for the speed impact survey. So there's a lot that goes into it, and that would have, if you guys do decide to pursue it, then staff would have to look into the cost for all of those things.
Sure, but that's the second step. Tonight, we're just deciding to evaluate the data further, and so my question is only for tonight, that the cost to say yes to staff report is an internal administrative cost of allocating your time. We're not writing a check to anybody.
Yes, exactly.
That's why I want to make sure. Thanks.
There's no fiscal impact as a result of the recommendations being made this evening. Two of the four recommendations are just to receive and file. One of them is to just affirm us collecting data. There is administrative costs for collecting the data from the speed feedback signs, but it's nominal that we can go out and do that. The other is, is right now, we're not eligible for any of this technology. If the council's interested in us pursuing it, then you could give us direction to reach out to our state representatives to see if they want to sponsor a bill or author a bill that would include us. I would tell you, based on the data that Jen went over, I, compared to like Malibu and some of the other cities that are eligible for speed cameras, I don't think we would meet the eligibility criteria. So perhaps instead of us giving us direction to pursue it, maybe it's something to continue to monitor and, and as this pilot program in the state of California proceeds and more cities start to launch the program, we can then come back and give you a report on that. So just something for you to consider.
No, thanks. And my question's amply answered, and there's no objection for me to take this step, which is just to compile data and have it ready should it be needed.
Any other questions? Yes, Councilmember Peristam?
Thank you. Question is, number three is very interesting. When will we start collecting that data and start reporting on that data?
Staff is currently looking into getting a contractor to obtain that data, so that way they can teach staff, and then we can manage it after we are taught in how to use the system.
So we'll be able to bring that in-house?
That's the hope, yes.
Great, okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Ferraro? Mayor Bradley, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Ferraro. I'm sorry. Then I have a couple of questions.
Okay. I don't see any point in us doing anything at this point in time, except receive and file this report.
Okay. Mayor Bradley?
Yeah, Jen, just a couple of questions. So I think you said we would have to go get a consultant out there to go start gathering the data if we really wanted to take this to the next step, though, you know, there probably is a wait-and-see here to see how it turns out in Malibu and other places. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So there would be some cost to go out and get a consultant to go look at this for us if we wanted to really take this to the next step, as opposed to what city manager kind of implemented, was kind of put this on the simmer and see how things come out in the next year or so, and then see if we could get authorization to put such devices if it panned out in other jurisdictions into the city. Is that about right?
So let me clarify, Mr. Mayor. So what I was referring to refers to recommendation number two, where we would pursue the, our state representatives for authoring a bill for the Speed Safety System Pilot Program. Jennifer was referring to is having a consultant collect the data. That's actually the data that, the speed data that our speed feedback signs already collect, and so we're already collecting that data. It's just someone has to retrieve that data from all of those speed feedback signs. So that's where we were, we're looking at onboarding a consultant to help us gather that data.
We don't download that data already?
No, we don't.
Is that because we don't have the time, or that's because we don't have the technical resources to be able to download off the radar signs?
It's essentially the staffing and the technical support for that.
Do you really think that we need to do that at this time?
Yes, I think it's good data that we need and we should probably obtain so that we could really understand the traffic patterns, especially when it comes to speed. So every time the feedback sign alerts a driver that you're exceeding the speed limit, it tracks that, and so we can collect that data, and we actually will know how many times that sign clicks and alerts a driver that they're exceeding the speed limit. I think that'll help us really understand what's going on.
Sure, but to be clear, my question was limited to adopting staff recommendations tonight.
Yeah, we're not spending any money.
Was there a hard cost to that?
We're not spending any money.
The consultant is not included in tonight's recommendations.
Correct. You're not, you're not being asked to appropriate any money or budget. There's no fiscal impact that we're reporting to you. If we come back and we, if we find out what the consultant's cost is, we'll come back if we need to, or if it exceeds our, what's already in our discretionary budget.
Just wanted to avoid any doubt on that point.
Okay, so what you're asking for now is a no-cost receive-and-file, basically.
Mr. Mayor, do you have any comments, deliberation comments, or anything like that to add?
Actually, is the captain still there?
She is.
Captain Guerrero, what has been your experience in other jurisdictions from around LA Sheriff's Department on automatic speed traffic cameras? Department on automatic speed traffic cameras?
There isn't a lot of data actually for the speed cameras. There isn't many out there and I would have to actually check with every one of our stations to actually find data for you, but I don't think there's much data out there with the speed cameras. We don't, we don't really use them.
Yeah, they're not, they're not operating in Los Angeles. The only speed cameras that are being used that are sanctioned by the state is in San Francisco. Malibu hasn't installed it and I believe it's Pasadena, was it Pasadena is the other city in, in Los Angeles? And they haven't, they haven't installed it yet. So the only city.
Why are we even talking about it?
This, it's essentially an update report based on the request from former council members.
All right, any other questions before we go on to deliberation? Councilmember Perez.
Thank you. I want to be clear because now the more we're talking about this, more seems to be getting confused. Item three is we already have ownership of these, of these speed flashback. I don't think we knew the full capability of what that included up to, up to very recently. So we're sitting on data that we've been asking for, for the last six months, and we have it. So that's what I think staff is about to find out what it takes to get that out. If there's above the spending limit, they'll come back to us, but there's nothing to do with that bigger program that's referred to on a national basis. So this is actually really good news. Item three is, is what we've been asking for and we actually have control over our own data, which is, which is a high priority in our, in our public safety initiative around speeding. So I'm excited about getting that data and I hope we can get it cheaper. So thank you.
Well, what, what does that mean if we're taking action now to affirm staff collection? But I thought in a way we weren't actually affirming anything tonight except that we got this report.
We're not.
So let me, let me try to simplify this. Recommendation one and two relate to accessing the technology of speed cameras to detect speeders and to sight speeders. That's, that's recommendation one and two, which one is to receive and file and two is to consider whether we should pursue being included in the state of California's Speed Safety Pilot Program. So that means you would authorize us to ask Senator Allen or Assemblymember Mursucci to author a bill that would add us to the pilot program. Recommendation number three is related to the speed feedback signs that we already have installed at certain corridors in our city, like on PV Drive East, on Hawthorne Boulevard. What we've learned is, and have access to now, is that there is data that's being collected. Every time that speed feedback sign goes off, we're just asking you to affirm us collecting that data and to start using that data. So that's recommendation three. Recommendation four is to receive and file a report on using camera technology on loud exhaust and we're not asking for any action other than to receive and file.
Maybe at the risk of dragging this a little longer, I'll try to big picture it as I see it, right? There's value in us extracting this data if we can do it ourselves internally because then we have it. My, my non-professional casual understanding is that these, the results of these automated law enforcement technologies are mixed, right? They sometimes don't pay for themselves, sometimes it doesn't work well, whatever. But if we don't gather the data, then we don't have the data. And if there's a need for it in the future, to Councilman Perez's point, or for some other ancillary purpose, it's kind of silly for us not to get it once we've already got these things on our streets. We just have to go get the data. So that's worthy, but we're not agreeing to spend any money. They will come back to us to spend money if we want to go forward with that. But we're here tonight because Eric and John asked for it, right?
And neither one of them are here. Where are they?
So I don't think there's harm in just gathering data. It's probably valuable.
So we're definitely in a deliberation period now, so any final comments?
Well, I don't understand what affirm staff collection means. If we're already doing this, why do we have to affirm that we're doing it?
We haven't started doing it. It's, it's, we are starting to, we want to, we want to be able to start collecting the data from these feedback signs.
No, no, all right, just let me. I don't believe that those signs are currently calibrated. We don't go through a calibration process. They are what they are, so they're close, but they're not a calibrated system, correct?
I believe you're correct, but it, yes.
Okay. I mean, like Captain Guerrero and her team, they go out and they calibrate their either laser or radar speed detectors on a annual, biannual basis. I can't remember what the requirement is. Captain Guerrero probably knows off the top of her head, but I don't think we do that for the, the traffic signs that say basically slow down, you're going faster than, than the speed limit, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Just my two cents on the whole thing is this, I think the conversation we're having, especially with the data is important and getting metrics and things like that is very important, but I think the conversation we're having is very premature, given what we have. And the other part too is, the thing that worries me the most is that the legislation requires the program to operate on a revenue neutral basis, which means that you don't gain anything from it unless you actually have a need and a necessity for it. And at this point, like I said, I think it's premature to have a system like that online and we have to pay upfront. You know, it ranges between $2 and $5 million that we don't have. So just looking forward and prospectively, I think we can visit this again, but tonight I think we just need to make a motion to adopt staff recommendation and move on until we have more information at this point.
I'll make a motion to adopt staff recommendation.
Hold on, Mr. Mayor.
Sorry.
I was just going to say, so I think what you're saying, Mayor Protem, is that we should adopt recommendation one, three, and four and not pursue recommendation number two.
Yeah, that was the other consideration that I was thinking about is to actually strike number two.
I agree.
Yeah.
So before you said that, Councilman Lewis, if you're going to say adapt staff recommendation, I would offer a friendly amendment to that or, or I'll move to adopt staff recommendations one, three, and four and strike number two.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Our roll call?
Discussion first? Councilman Lewis wants to weigh in?
No, I mean, my motion appears to have died without a second, so.
Okay.
Councilmember Perez, do you have a comment?
Do you have a question about that?
No, I just wanted to give.
Oh, okay.
I'm fine with it. I think the grind through that conversation was beneficial.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think we've got to the right place. So thank you.
All right, back to roll call.
Councilmember Ferraro?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Seo?
Yes.
Mayor Bradley?
Yes.
Motion passes. With that, we can move to item number three, consideration to hold the 2025 Winter Holiday Celebrations Event at the Kindite Civic Center. I do not have any request to speak.
Thank you. Staff report, please. This is the, this is the most important topic of tonight.
And I believe the elf-in-chief is going to be giving the staff report, correct?
Where is she? Oh, there you are.
She's behind the monitor.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council. It's my pleasure to present on the 2025. Let me share my screen here. Sorry about that. Okay.
Dan's going to have to work on getting his beard a little whiter by December.
You have to let yours grow so you can be Santa.
Okay, are we? Okay. Is it showing? No.
Can we just talk about what we want to do for Christmas?
A big fat check under the tree from FEMA is all I want for Christmas.
Okay.
That would be great.
There we go.
Winter holiday celebration options.
There we go. Okay, sorry for the delay. We'll try to speed through this. It's my pleasure to present on the 2025 Winter Holiday Celebration Options. I have Deputy Director Emily Rodine here to present. Let me give a little bit of background. We started offering a holiday rink event, tree lighting in 2021. Every year, we look to improve on the offerings. We change vendors. We look to boost visitation while also improve operations. So this past year, we moved from a synthetic rink, ice rink, to a roller rink. We also added other amenities, some of which will be presented tonight as options for council to consider. Ultimately, we're looking to affirm, we're looking to have city council affirm that we are going to offer a holiday event and then also to identify options that you guys would all like to consider. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Emily.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight, I'm going to present on the options for our winter holiday celebration. So the first option we're bringing to the table is a tree and menorah lighting. The tree lighting would occur on Friday, December 5th, and it would include snow, sledding, snow flurries by the tree, food trucks, inflatables, vendors for holiday shopping, as well as performances. Last year, we had the local high school come out and do a performance for us. The other option is the menorah lighting, and that would be on December 15th. Hanukkah kicks off on December 14th, so that would be our celebration for Hanukkah. That would include inflatables and games, performances, a dreidel and gild drop with the local fire station, and freshly served lakas. Option two would include all the items option one, the tree and menorah lighting ceremonies, as well as a weekend winter festival between December 5th and December 7th. And so those additional elements would include on December 6th, a caroling and cocoa night, which has snow and sledding, inflatables and games, live carolers, a hot cocoa bar, and trackless train rides. December 7th would be our Santa's workshop, where people would be able to do photos with Santa, a letter to Santa station, gingerbread house making station, snow and sledding, and inflatables and games. Our third option is the tree and menorah lighting ceremonies, as well as the opening weekend events, along with winter themed events throughout the month of December. The additional days would be December 13th. We'd host our Brex of Santa traditionally held in this room at Hess Park in the, in the park grounds at the Kindite Civic Center. December 14th, a drive-in holiday movie. December 20th, winter night magic, which would include a guided night hike, snow flurries at the tree, storytelling and smores by the fire with a cocoa and coffee bar. And then our final day would be December 27th, our frozen fun day, where we'd have a frozen character meet and greet, inflatables, a cookie decorating station, and crafts. The different pricing levels for the holiday celebration, option one would be about $42,000. Option two, the tree and menorah lighting events and the weekend winter festival would be about $48,500. And option three, the tree and menorah lighting expanded events would about be $56,500. It's important to note that $75,000 has been adopted in this year's budget for the winter holiday celebration. So staff recommends the city council firm holding a 2025 Winter Holiday Celebration. If the council wishes to conduct an event, choose from the following options. Option one, the tree lighting ceremony on December 5th and a menorah lighting ceremony on December 15th. Option two, tree and menorah lighting ceremonies and a weekend winter festival between December 5th and 7th. Option three, a tree and menorah lighting ceremony with winter themed activities and events throughout the month of December. The following alternative actions are available for the city council's consideration. Do not hold a winter holiday celebration for 2025.
Ah ha, humbug.
Identify an alternative combination of events or event elements. Identify other options for staff to explore and return to the city council with more information at a later date or take other action as deemed appropriate. Available for any questions.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions, guys?
Yes.
No question.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferraro?
Can you put the three? Yeah, that's, that's okay. You said we've already budgeted $75,000 and none of these go over that, right?
Correct.
And is there a possibility of getting any sponsors for any or all of this?
We do have planned, every year, we've done a donation campaign to receive donations from different businesses and residents in the community. So we would be doing that again, the outreach.
Oh, and I already see one volunteer. Our city attorney will help out with this. So why wouldn't we do number three? I mean, that's, that's a little bit of everything and, I mean, is there some reason why we're trying to make it cost less? I mean, besides the overall picture of the city needs money in the first place?
When we did the budget, it was based on operating with a roller skating or synthetic ice skating rink, and that's not an element we're introducing for this year just due to challenges and not getting as much repeat visitors and participation.
Yeah, I don't think we should do that. I mean, my daughter actually, granddaughter actually came and did that once, but she's much too old now and sophisticated to do that, and it didn't work out very well. I mean, there were maybe three people that did it, so I'm all for number three. And trying to get as many sponsors as we can.
Mr. Mayor?
I'd just like to commend staff for, once again, for Wreckin' Parks for continuing to change the offering here and evolving it. I know that we've had some challenges with some of the turnout and the cost of the skating rink in the past, so kudos to y'all for continuing to reevaluate and come back with better options. I'm on the same page with Councilwoman Ferraro. The cost per day, if you look at these three options, certainly the, the better bang for the buck is option number three, and it's still well within our current budget line item without even going out and getting some sponsors from the local community. So I'm in favor of this.
All right. Councilmember Lewis?
Yeah, my two cents, I've already been hammered tonight for being a Grinch, which I just take to mean I'm doing a good job. But in this case, I make an exception because I think these events that we hold, whether it was Well of the Day or the Fourth of July, are broadly popular with the citizens. I mean, there's, there's good turnout, people love them, and I think this is, this one is equally, you know, popular in the winter, winter events. So I'd be for putting on as, as many as we can and we'll continue to draw. My question between two and three would be, if you go to as many events as three has, are you sort of diminishing your pool because people kind of get worn out after two or three events and they don't want to do five or six? I don't know, maybe not. So, but that would be my only question, but certainly we should go forward with it.
Councilmember Perez.
Okay, thank you. Well, I guess it's my turn to be the Grinch, so.
Going to be the Grinch?
I'm going to be the Grinch. I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm going to, you have to hear me out. It's going to take me a minute to give my, my little, my little viewpoint on this. This is the fifth year this has occurred. It came out of a COVID, COVID era, December 2021, when we were just coming out of that period of time, and it's a fantastic idea. I can, I can see, not so recent past, why would we do this and why the former council did this? I completely supportive of that. If you look at the information, though, the data over the last four years is this, this is an event unlike Well of the Day and the Fourth of July, which are wildly successful and very well done and are wonderful events. This is struggling with its format, and I, I think that we haven't quite found that right format yet and that there's, there's a couple of other challenges that we have baked into, baked into these alternatives. One being fact of December 6th, if we're going down the number two route here of options, is that's the night of the Rolling Hills Estates Parade, and that is the, the event of, of the peninsula. It's well known, a lot of people, doesn't matter what city they're from, but that's, that's like our Fourth of July. That's, that's their. That's their big event and it's very successful. So what I think's missing here, may change the trajectory of this going forward and bring people out, is that we look at an option where we have one single day and we see what we can do that works in that format of one day and it becomes more of an event with a focus instead of these options where we're doing different combinations of things there. So I would like to see if we have the time before we make a hard decision on this to come back with an option for a day that has a package of these programs and we could celebrate that as an event and to make it not December 6th. So I'm the Grinch.
You're the Grinch.
Real quick, Dan, in terms of the calendar that you guys have for option three, can you guys staff these and be okay? I'm just curious.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we could handle the staffing for what's proposed.
Okay. Yeah, my inclination is to do option three. We're well under budget and I think, you know, having all these programs is great and I think our city needs it, especially with the population that we have. And, you know, having all these events is something that it's sorely needed on the peninsula. I know other adjacent cities have similar things, but we don't have too many events like these and I think this is a big draw for us. And I definitely want to see the mayor get on a sled again for, and go down a ski slope, so.
I've got some great videos, by the way.
So given that, I'm for option three and-
Motion.
And if there's no other questions or deliberation.
But, sorry, but ought we consider, I mean, I think trying to hold an event the same night as the Rolling Hills Parade is kind of like trying to battle a Taylor Swift concert. You're going to lose.
I think we can, Dan, if we could probably tweak it and do something for it.
Would it be on the 13th or something, man? Like, maybe we need to just recalendarize.
I think we could look at options to offer it in the afternoon-
Yeah, earlier today.
Earlier, before the event.
Something that definitely does not conflict-
Yeah.
-with that because we won't be there.
Right.
If, you know, we'll be in the parade.
Okay. With that being said, is there a motion?
I move that we follow number three and that we make sure we're not conflicting with the other celebrations of the peninsula.
So the motion would be staff recommendation with recommendation number two being C, which is the option three.
Correct. Can I get a second, please?
Okay.
Is anybody in second motion or no?
I'll second it.
Thank you.
If nobody else is, sorry.
Would we include, I'm asking the question, would we include in that motion to allow staff to, while we're authorizing that amount of money for this mix of events, to authorize staff to recalendarize as appropriate?
Absolutely. I would accept that amendment and give staff flexibility to make sure that we de-conflict the calendars as much as possible.
Correct, and try to stay under budget.
I already said that.
Yeah, and she did say that. So there is a second on table, roll call, please.
Can we have discussion?
Well, hurry up.
Discussion on-
What do you want to discuss? You can vote no if you don't want to do it.
I understand that. I just wanted to, never mind.
No, no, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead.
I thought we have discussion after, a final discussion after we have a motion and a second?
No, goes a vote.
Do you want to discuss it? Discuss it.
I'm going to go back to my points here, that the idea of a single event is not represented in our decision-making here and that I think that there are some problems with some very specific items that are here, such as the date on the 27th. It's on the table as one of the events. I'm supportive of doing this. I just think that we haven't explored all the avenues of doing it and the dates available to us. So that's my objection to this.
Okay.
You can vote no, it's all right.
All right, the motion's on the table, has been seconded.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Ferraro?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Parrisham?
No.
Mayor Protam Seo?
Yes.
Mayor Bradley?
Yes.
Motion passes. With that, we can move to our future agenda items.
Any future agenda items from councilmembers? No? Okay, next item, please. Oh, actually going back, Councilmember Lewis, you have something?
No, I'm, proceed.
Sure? Forever hold your peace? Sure?
Well, I, it's, we've passed the motion, but within, I think to reflect part of what Councilman Parrisham is getting at and what his objection was to this is I think I would encourage, I don't know if this is now part of the motion, but it's a part of the discretionary to staff to recalendarize. I'm not sure I agree complete with Councilman Ferraro that holding our event in the afternoon and then having the Rolling Hills Parade in the evening is a winner. Like, people are going to go to one or the other, but not both. Why not move that a week forward? It's the 27th, are most people going to be traveling? Will people be coming to that? I would encourage staff to do a broader rethinking of the calendarization to optimize turnout. And so that's kind of what I was getting at and I think definitely what Councilman Parrisham was getting at.
That's incumbent in the motion.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah, I mean, I meant that to be part of the motion also because we can't really compete and don't want to compete with the bigger peninsula celebration because we're all part of that celebration.
Yeah, I think the implied task here for staff is to look at the scheduling and adjust accordingly, but I think option three gives them the leeway, given the budget, to plan based on that as opposed to having restrictions on money and a single day. And I think voting on option three gives them that, the leeway to adjust as needed. So I think it's implied in the motion.
I think we're all in agreement, but I'm bending the nail over on it because I think we sometimes have a tendency to be literal and if you go back and replay this conversation, you're going to hear a conflict cited as just that one day and then moving the event to the afternoon, which is a very narrow suggestion of recalendarization. So I'm merely saying to be very blunt and avoidance of doubt, staff, be very creative in trying to recalendarize because it probably will benefit from it. That's my point.
Understood, and I'll make a point to, once we finalize or have a more refined calendar, share it with the council.
Yeah.
So this is, essentially what your motion does is gives us the authority to move forward with a program. We'll fine-tune it, we'll try to de-conflict any calendar events and simplify it so that we're not conflicting with any other cities or any other events going on.
Our staff's pretty smart that way, so I don't worry about that.
All right, if there are any other comments, back to future agenda items, anybody? None? Okay, moving on to City Council reports, sorry.
We do have Thursday. Thursday, did you want to mention that?
Thursday.
Yeah, that's the-
The open house?
Yeah, the open house. And we're all going to be there, or we're supposed to be there. Some of us will be there.
I'm coaching an AYSO game at that time.
So oral reports, Councilmember Parrisham, do you have anything?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilmember Lewis? Mayor Bradley?
None.
Thank you. Councilmember Ferraro?
No.
Okay, I don't have-
Except that he's excused from Thursday.
Got it. All right, moving on to adjournment, I'm going to adjourn this meeting at 8:34. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.